Okay, and first item on the agenda is council comments. I've seen your lights, I'll start. Ah, now the lights are coming. First, I just wanted to congratulate those volunteers in the community who put the Tacoma Park Folk Festival on yesterday. I don't know what the final outcome was in terms of the attendance. I know it was a little sparse early on because of the rain. I hope it picked up a good bit. I know that the event lost a little bit of money last year and people were hoping to make that up this year. And I hope the rain didn't keep the attendance down such that there will be ongoing fiscal difficulties with the Folk Festival. It was very nice, the part that I was there volunteering at. And remind everybody that that is a community-run event by volunteers. It costs money. I think it has a budget of about $30,000. People always need donations. And remind everybody that that's one of the signature events that everybody associates with the city of Tacoma Park. It's a great one. It was the 33rd annual one. And I hope we all can look forward to many more of those. I was at that event a little bit early because I went to another Tacoma Park-related event later in the day yesterday, which was equally wonderful. The Liz Lerman Dance Exchange had a performance both Friday and yesterday of a new work that was fascinating over at the University of Maryland. And it combined dance and physics. It was a collaboration between the Dance Exchange, Liz Lerman, and the Physics Department at the University of Maryland and the people there who work on the, I don't remember what it's called, CERN is the acronym, but out in New Mexico. And it was just fascinating performance. Everybody who was there just really got engaged. And so I would encourage those who have not experienced Liz Lerman, which is headquartered in Tacoma Park, to go to any of the performances and get on the mailing list for anything that they do. Wonderful performances. I also just wanted to briefly mention that for any of those who saw me quoted in the Washington Post this morning and might have wondered where Cherry Hill Road is in Tacoma Park, it's not in Tacoma Park. It's in Silver Spring. However, it's the light that I was complaining about is the new traffic light at the entrance to the new Washington Adventist Hospital. So I thought if we wanted to try and keep the hospital in the city, we would just annex all the way out to Cherry Hill Road and then the new hospital would still be in the city of Tacoma Park. And then I wanted to remind my colleagues that this Thursday night is the Maryland Musical League Montgomery Chapter Meeting. It will be here at the city at 7:30. And if people want to come a little bit early, at 6:45 this Thursday evening, September 16th, CHEER is putting on an event in this auditorium and in the azalea room, presenting some of the results of the work that they've been doing lately. And that promises to be very interesting. So we can make an evening of it here on Thursday evening. And I'd invite the public to come to the presentation by CHEER. That's on their housing indicators and some other things and looks to be quite interesting. And then just the final thing I'll comment on is my meeting that I went today. And I love the acronym for this group. It's WHIPSAC. And that's the Watershed Implementation Plan Strategic Advisory Committee for the Chesapeake Bay. This is the group of all of the stakeholders from all over the state who are working on the Maryland Watershed Implementation Plan for improving the bay. And I just wanted to let folks know that there are upcoming public meetings. And I hope I brought the piece of paper with me. If I can find it, I'll come back to it. But there are upcoming meetings the end of this month and in October. October 6th, I believe, is the one that I'm going to be going to in Upper Marlboro. Suffice it to say that it's an accelerated schedule for those who haven't been following Chesapeake Bay activities, only knowing that the voluntary programs that have been used between 1985 and the current time have been successful in getting us partway to where we need to be, but haven't been as successful as needed. So mandatory controls are coming. This is addressing agriculture, chicken farmers, stormwater development, all the issues that affect the Chesapeake Bay. And there's going to be presentations for elected officials during the first hour of these meetings around the state. It's also open to the public. And anybody who wants to see what's going to be coming for the Chesapeake Bay, this is the Phase 1 implementation. There's Phase 2 coming next year and Phase 3 in 2017. Anybody wants any more information, contact me and I will get the information to my colleagues if you want to go to that October 6th meeting in Upper Marlboro. Councilmember Wright.
Thank you. I had a couple of issues. First was the unfortunate robbery of a gentleman on Cedar Avenue in the Penn neighborhood. And this has sparked a discussion about an idea that's come up in the past and I think warrants some further investigation, given the rate of technological change. So, and this idea has to do with the use of video surveillance cameras. We've asked the chief about this in the past. And in the past, his feedback to us, as I remembered, is that, one, the cameras haven't been proven to be a deterrent or particularly successful in helping catch criminals for a variety of reasons. There are a couple of different studies about this. And then the second is that the cost-benefit trade-off was pretty, not in our favor, it was quite expensive, particularly given that they weren't, didn't seem to be particularly effective. So I wonder if we could ask the chief a couple of questions about that, about whether there's any technological advances and what his current opinion is on this issue. And in particular, it might make sense for us to consider piloting a technology like this in a certain, in a certain area or areas, not necessarily the one where the robbery occurred, but in the city to see if they do work. You know, I think before we undertake this, we would need to have some very open discussions about privacy issues and how people in the community felt about that and get more details about the actual benefits of the type of cameras. So if you could have the chief give us his read on that, that would be very helpful. The second is also related to cameras, which is the, would like to understand where we are in the license plate scanner. We authorized the police department to use a license plate scanner that basically would enable officers to do what they currently do, but at a much faster rate. Basically, we'd observe cars going by and almost instantaneously check that license plate scanner into a, in a database for, to see if people have outstanding warrants, basically. And we have a whole set of policies about how long the information's kept. But one of the things was that we were going to get a report back about the use of that license plate scanner, its effectiveness and the data around it. And I know that's of significant interest to me and also significant interest to people in the community because there was concern, again, about privacy, the use of that data, how long it was kept for, would it be reported to any of the databases that it pinged to check on warrants and that sort of stuff. So would love a report back on that. And I think where we've hit the mark, where we stipulated that we would get a report back on it based on how long it's been in action, but I'm not entirely sure because I can't remember the exact date when it went into action.
Yeah, I'm looking on the agenda to see that and I don't see it, but I know we were going to put that on.
Mayor, if I may. The actual implementation was a little bit delayed. We did have some technological issues to work through. So the cameras actually didn't get up and running until mid-August. I think the chief's preference would be to have a couple of months at least under our belt. And I can certainly work with the mayor and the chief to get that scheduled.
So maybe in December or January?
Yeah.
Great, thank you. The third item is a drain on Philadelphia Avenue, as in a storm drain, near the college. There's a drain on Philly near the bus stop on the southern side of the street. If you're coming eastbound, it's just past Chicago Avenue. I've spoken with Darrell about this previously and she was going to talk to State Highway about getting it fixed. It's basically this slight incorrect grating around the drain that develops a large puddle when it rains. It doesn't even have to rain that heavily. And the result is that people go along Philadelphia Avenue very quickly. And people who are near the bus stop or walking to the bus stop, often college students, get soaked as the cars speed by and splash them. I don't think maliciously, but they're going the other way. Well, maybe some people do it maliciously, but I hope not. The fourth, so if you could just check into that with SHA, that'd be great. And then the fourth issue has to do with the crosswalk lights, like the one they have in Rockville. And I first want to say that this is Councilmember Clay's idea earlier this morning. Not my idea. I can't take credit for the idea. I'm only taking credit for supporting her efforts.
No, he remembered. He doesn't remember. He's just teasing me.
No, I always remember. So I just wanted to check in. We were going to inquire to State Highway about whether they would allow us to put up those lights in certain locations. I think some prime places are on Ethan Allen and Elm, along Carroll Avenue. And basically what they allow pedestrians to do is to push a button and it creates these flashing signs around well-displed crosswalk signals or crosswalk signs, basically reminding drivers that in the state of Maryland, if someone's in a crosswalk, you actually have to stop for them. So it's a, it's one step short of a red light with a walk signal, but also very effective. It works quite well in Rockville outside the county council chambers every time I've used it. So if we, do you have any?
Yeah, I do. I think we had discussed this issue back in July. And following that council meeting, the Public Works Director did send a request to SHA. And basically, their process is to require traffic counts, pedestrian counts. And they wanted to wait understandably until school was in session. The three locations that we had sent over were Carroll Avenue at Park and Ethan Allen at Elm and St. Marilyn 195 in Lincoln. They don't actually use the device that was similar to Rockville. We had actually sent the link. They use what they refer to as a pedestrian-activated warning beacon. My sense is that they're sort of comfortable with their own technology versus the newer ones. So I think that will be a discussion point. The email that Darrell got back did indicate that because they didn't think a crosswalk was warranted at the Lincoln location, that the warning beacon would not be warranted either. So there's at least two locations that they should be in the process of doing some pedestrian counts. And I'll have Darrell follow up.
And do we know what a warning beacon is exactly?
I'm assuming it's probably one of the things where you hit a button and it counts down. That's my guess. But I can certainly check with someone who knows a lot more about traffic signalization than I do. But that's my assumption rather than the lit pavement, which I think we were all excited about, so.
Yeah, the one in Rockville is not lit pavement. It's just bright signals. Does it blink along the pavement?
It actually blinks along the pavement. Assuming we can work through the SHA issues, I had asked the chief to also touch base with Rockville in the interim to see if they had a contract that, if this is workable with SHA, that we could piggyback off of. Unfortunately, that's not the case. Their contract apparently was when this company was first kind of getting into the business. They didn't have a lot of other clients. It was sort of a sole-source situation. There now are others. So we would probably need to competitively bid any contract. I don't know that that's problematic, but there would just be some time involved with that.
Okay. I'd be curious about the electricity, how their beacon operates. One of the things I found very appealing about the Rockville situation is that it seems to be solar powered. There's like a solar panel on the top of it. And I think it uses LED lights, which are very low energy consumption. So if theirs is not that type, it might be worth going to bat with our state legislators because I'm sure they're very environmentally conscious. The last item I wanted to bring up, and I want to be very clear here that I'm not trying to interfere with the city newsletter. I know that's, the city council members are not supposed to interfere with the city newsletter. There was an article in the last newsletter about EcoPark. And there is very limited investigation into the sources for that and basically just quoted the developer. And I brought this up last time. I was concerned that people might get the wrong idea about that. So I just want to, not even suggest, but wonder if the city newsletter might contemplate doing a follow-up article and talking to additional people. But I want to be very clear, I'm not pressuring people to do anything.
Councilmember Clay.
I just put raisins in my mouth.
Well, that's what we win here.
To who?
The rules.
Oh, sorry. All right. Folk Festival was a great festival. Had a terrific time. And it was some of the best music I'd ever heard at Folk Festival. And people actually were, it was, it was a great festival. And people actually were very generous. They had a bucket brigade this year. Folks went around and asked for contributions. And true to the Tacoma Park spirit, people gave a fair amount of money. And that was, that was really nice to have people provide some more monetary support to the Folk Festival. I know that was appreciated. I had lots of good times and lots of elected officials out. And today, they're all on the telephones, robo-calling my house. Let's see, last week I asked about the traffic circle at Elm and Lincoln and received a response from the city manager that the staff feels that it's appropriately engineered and that, let's see if I can articulate this correctly. It's appropriately engineered and that it's not an engineering issue and offered to provide some more traffic enforcement. And I just want to recall back to when the circle was being installed, we had a map of it that showed the area that juts out from the corner at Elm and Lincoln as being difficult for somebody to actually travel backwards through, not backwards, travel in the reverse direction through the traffic circle as they sort of come down that sweeping turn that they had already been making. And we talked about it quite a bit and, you know, talked about how things jutted out there and it would be too difficult for people to speed down through there. They'd have to turn and kind of make a jagged cut through there, but that is not the case. It is broader than it appeared on paper. And when we, and when they initially marked it, I expressed that concern and residents expressed that concern. And the response from the city staff at that time was that if it turned out to be a problem, we could reevaluate where the curbs came out. We would consider putting a stop sign in at the, where Lincoln Avenue abuts the circle. We could talk about elevating or raising the little splitters that divide you before you go around the circle. And I, I think we are going to need to revisit that. So if we can't get some staff support from that, I'm going to ask for council support on that. Also, the city manager responded to the request around the drain that's at the corner of Larch and Hayward Avenue. The house that's most adjacent to it faces Hayward at 812 Hayward. And it's going to be added to the list of activities that our existing contractor is going to do. I'm wondering how far down it is on the list and really what we're talking about is a timeframe. And if it's going to be a significant amount of time, maybe we could plate the top of that area that's kind of continuing to give way instead of just having the little barricades so that we could have something more of a deterrent or barrier to keep people from stepping around it or stepping into it. I want to clarify my statements about 410 in New Hampshire Avenue. I support asking the state to evaluate the intersection. I do not want to prioritize it over the Tacoma Junction evaluations that we're asking for. And so if staff feels like that's a conflict, then I guess I'd like to have that conversation with the staff before we make that request. And I want to clarify that I am not interested in asking the police not to enforce the law in any fashion, not just around that intersection. I occasionally get constituents who call and ask if we could have the police not enforce some traffic thing, not enforce some parking thing, not enforce some code enforcement thing. And just to be clear that the council doesn't engage in that. I don't want to ask the police not to do their job in a particular way or to have to interpret what they think the council is particularly thinking about, any one of the number of given laws that we have at any time. And I don't think our city manager would do it anyway. And I can't imagine what the process of looking for a city manager and interviewing them and talking to them about how they would be flexible about the enforcement of the laws of the city and what kind of a city manager we would get if we did that. So I would also like to know if there's a capital outlay plan for the sidewalks. The folks on Lincoln and Boyd are really excited about the possibility of sidewalks and they see in the, in the weekly reports that are going out that there are sidewalks being installed in places. And they just want to know if we could maybe get a plan for what that's going to look I'm glad you added the part about the lights being embedded in the roadway because that was, that was part of the initial request that I made like three or four years ago. And that's an important part of it. The lights have to flash in the roadway. And my last comment is that I'm on travel for a lot of the rest of this month. The only Monday that I'm going to miss is the last Monday of the month, but I'll be out a lot during the week. So I may kick things to you if I get, if I get emails from, from folks because I'm going to be in Vicksburg, Mississippi, Denver, Aberdeen, Maryland. Very exciting locations, just coming back from Iowa and other places west of here. And then it'll be the new fiscal year and the federal government won't have any money and I won't go anywhere for a while. So, thank you.
The city manager had something you wanted to?
Yeah, I just wanted to share with the council, as you look at the rolling agenda, you may have noticed at the end of October, there is a scheduled update on the Speed Camera Fund. That was something I had requested the mayor to schedule. I thought it would be helpful to sort of review what work has been done as of that date, what the staff at least has on its work plan we would recommend be prioritized and sort of review the revenue situation and kind of get a sense if there's any adjustments that need to be made. So hopefully, Councilmember Clay, we can give you an update on your location at that time.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Robinson.
I have two things to say. One is that I want to remind people that this coming Sunday in this room will be a part of the cultural outreach, "We Are Tacoma" program at 6:00 PM. And I hope people will come and enjoy that. I do want to touch on the 410 New Hampshire Avenue light situation because I think it's worth more discussion, maybe not at this point, but the light, I started out thinking that enforcement was appropriate and that a reconfiguration of the, an extensive reconfiguration of that intersection was probably going to be required in order to get clarity on which traffic goes where and who can turn where and so forth. I don't think that's the case. I think it's a very simple adjustment that needs to be made. And I'm frustrated that we can't ask for something from State Highway, some small thing like that from State Highway, that we instead get tangled up into a kind of a strategic conversation about, we can't ask them for this because they might not listen to us on that. And I'm frustrated by that position. I would much prefer that we, if we have a problem with a specific intersection, that we ask State Highway about that problem. And if we have a specific problem on some other intersection or some portion of roadway, that we ask them about that intersection or portion of roadway. I agree that telling the police what to enforce and what not to enforce is certainly not our job. I will come back to that intersection and note that the direction, the two directions, east and west, on East-West Highway have an almost identical traffic pattern. If you're going east, you're allowed to turn left from two lanes. If you're going west, you're allowed to turn left from one lane. And I think people get confused and make assumptions, particularly when they have the full light and no oncoming traffic. So I think, and I think that's why this came up and why my constituents are upset about it.
Any other comments? Councilmember Schultz.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I also attended the Folk Festival yesterday and that it was a delightful experience. I got to shake the governor's hand and that was satisfying, to say the least.
Did he give you any money? Did he tell him to quit cutting our budget?
You know, he did, but I didn't know what to do with the money. As, with regard to this Thursday night's presentation, I received an invitation to attend it, the slide presentation presented, put on by CHEER. But I'm going to be in Baltimore babysitting grandchildren that night, overnight. So I would not be able to attend. But that's the only reason I won't be there. My grandchildren have been, this has been planned for a long time. So that's the full extent of my comments.
And I'll just note that Councilmember Siemens was called away to a community event on Maple Avenue and he will be back shortly. Next item on our agenda is a little quick scheduling update. And I just wanted to point out a couple of things on upcoming agendas. Next week, Monday, September 20th, we have two public hearings on Sherman Avenue and Grant Avenue Traffic Calming and then discussion of those afterward. The following Monday, the 27th, we have a public hearing on the Community Development Block Grant Program. And the final item that evening is a discussion of proposals for revision to the tree ordinance and related matters. Remind my colleagues that if you have any proposals for that, that you want to get in for some review by staff and the Tree Commission, if you can get those to the city manager by close of business Wednesday.
Yes.
The following Monday is October 4th, and there's going to be a presentation on the city's Safe Roots to Schools program and work session discussions on vending in city facilities and youth appointments to committees and proposals to establish a youth council. And finally, on the 11th, Monday, the October 11th, we're going to discuss the staff comments on the task force on environmental action report and begin our discussion on recommendations of those, of the task force. And the following week, October 18th, we will continue that discussion on the task force report. And we will also discuss establishing a redistricting task force since we're going to need to redistrict based on the new census. And also discuss appointments to a 2011 Council Compensation Committee. That's some housekeeping items that we will need to do. Next item is adoption of minutes. We have before us consideration of minutes from July 6th and July 12th. Would somebody like to move adoption of those minutes?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Snicker, second by Councilmember Schultz. Any revisions? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, aye opposed. Minutes are adopted unanimously. It's now time for a public comment for anybody who'd like to talk to us about anything that isn't on our regular meeting agenda or for the public hearing. And if you can, please identify yourself and keep your comments to three minutes. Welcome.
Hello again. Kay Daniels Cohen from Sherman Avenue. And I've come here as president of the SS Carroll Neighborhood Association and an unofficial member of the Emergency Preparedness Committee. I did have also the opportunity to go to the Folk Festival yesterday and really enjoyed it myself. I got to work it and I'm going to, I'll speak to that. Today in your goodie basket, I've given you the Montgomery County information about, "Are You Ready?" This is about emergency preparedness and the FEMA PET document. So just read them over. Both of them are very similar, taking care of your pets just like taking Both of them are very similar, taking care of your pets just like taking care of yourself, just at smaller doses. But as I said last week, September is emergency preparedness month, and I'm back again this week to request that you remind your constituents about the importance of making a plan, creating a kit, and being informed for any emergency event. Yesterday, the committee was thrilled to have the opportunity to be at the Tacoma Park Folk Festival and speak with many of the attendees about not only being prepared for ourselves and our families, but also for our pets. We're fortunate to share our space, we were fortunate to share our space not only with the American Red Cross, but also CART, Montgomery County Animal Response Team, an outreach and educational program to help people prepare themselves and their pets for emergency and possibly set up an emergency animal shelter in conjunction with a human shelter. There were more than 650,000 pets, this kills me here, left behind during Hurricane Katrina, and that's an event that we'd like to avoid in our fair city and county. One of the most heart-wrenching scenes I remember was a couple only allowed to take one suitcase each upon a helicopter evaluation. Each of them was airlifted out of New Orleans with a carrier containing a dog as their suitcase. They left everything else behind. The committee is also assisting in marketing the first down-county CERT program, and that's the Community Emergency Response Training Program. It's going to be offered at the Cecil Saxon Post 41 American Legion on Sligo Creek, on Sligo Avenue in Silver Spring. The program will begin this Wednesday, September the 22nd, at 7:00 PM. There may still be some slots open, but you must apply online at EPC@TacomaGov.org. This is a very intense training that assists to any community volunteer in helping with emergency situations. I think Councilmember Siemens and his wife Joyce have both taken that course in the past. We've been very fortunate as a community to have had very little in the way of emergency situations in the recent past. It's still important to remember, make a plan, create a kit, and be informed for your home and for your office, too. And again, I thank you for your time and all that you do for the city. I'll be back next week with more goodies.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Mr. Lovelace?
Yeah? My name's Pat Lovelace, 7620 Maple Avenue. You're a peace delegate? I want to tell you, I was down at the Tacoma Park Folk Festival yesterday, too. I understand that the morning part of it was rain, it had a lot of rain in it, but the evening part seems to have, a lot of people seem to show up at the end, a lot of people were showing up at the last half of the festival, so I hope we broke even on that at least, I hope we made something on it this time. And also tomorrow, you know what tomorrow is? Tomorrow is the day I hope everybody comes out to the polls and vote. And I hope everybody comes out to the polls and vote tomorrow, because we've got to remember it's an important day tomorrow to vote in our primary, you know? Everybody has a right and a responsibility to vote. And I was glad, when I, before I came to the meeting, I ran into this 13-year-old girl, Amy, who goes to Tacoma Park Middle School. And she was telling me that they were talking about the importance and the responsibility of being a good voter, being a responsible voter. And I was so glad to hear that today. You know, that some of the stuff that I've been working for is starting to come to fruition. So I want to ask anybody out there, and everybody in here, too, to remind their relatives, to remind their family to tomorrow, come on out and vote. I'll be out there tomorrow, I'm going to vote, no matter what. I'll be out there tomorrow to vote. And I hope to see everybody out there tomorrow to vote. I hope we have a good turnout. And also, coming up in November, we got to vote, too. And also, the Street Festival, I understand, is coming up on October the 3rd, the day after the jobs demonstration in Washington, DC. Because we're having a big demonstration for jobs down in Washington, you know? The way the economy is today, we need that. So I expect everybody in Tacoma Park who wants to be an activist to come on down and support the work I'm doing, support the work a lot of people are doing, trying to better our economy, better our nation, and better our, better our families and our others. But also, to better our youth. You know, part of raising a good child is raising them responsibly. And also, a child can raise an adult, too, by getting out there and telling his parents and reminding them that tomorrow is the day we've got to come out and vote. Tuesday tomorrow is voting day, and I want to see everybody out there. Thank you very much.
Is there anybody else who'd like to come up?
Hello, my name is Ed Gossman, Roscoe's Pizzeria. And I was at the understanding that the city council still has not decided the off-sale license for alcohol beverages?
We have a public hearing coming up on that as soon as we're finished with the public comment.
Okay.
And so you can speak on that then.
Okay.
Anybody else? Okay, then, city manager, have any comments?
Nothing this evening.
Okay, then we will move to the public hearing, which is to take comment on a proposed change to state law regarding alcoholic beverage sales in Tacoma Park, sale of beer and wine for off-site consumption. And we have some people who have signed up, and then we will give anybody who hasn't signed up an opportunity to speak as well. And the first person to sign up is Robert Lenza, and he'll be followed by Paul Dastasio, and I'm not sure the first name, Mr. or Ms. Montenegro.
Hello, I'm Robert Lenza. I live at 7215 Cedar Avenue. I spoke a few months ago when we were here concerning the proposed change to the state licensing law, and I spoke in opposition to it. I am here again to speak in opposition to any changes in law. My rationale for opposing it is that it would not be a local decision as to who does and does not get licensed. It would be a decision that would be made on the part of county. We have a long history here in Tacoma Park of the county making decisions that are in the interests of the county and not in the interests of the people here in Tacoma Park. That being said, I do notice in the agenda item here that there is a particular item of discussion as to whether Tacoma Park should include veto authority in the, any implementing legislation for changes to the licensing law. If Tacoma Park had veto authority over licensing, my opinion concerning opposition to this endeavor might change. My principal opposition is that, you know, the county is going to make decisions as to who does and does not get licensed. If the city could make such a decision, or at least have veto authority over the decision, that would certainly be, that would certainly be something positive. I think that if one is going to introduce legislation, those two items should be tied together, that any change in the law should be tied to Tacoma Park veto authority, that one should not happen in the legislature without the other. Those two should not be separable. I'm not speaking in opposition because I think that any particular licensee is going to be irresponsible. I am a patron of the Co-op, I'm a patron of Roscoe's, I'm a patron of a lot of businesses in Tacoma Park. It's not that any one particular licensee might be irresponsible, but people in this room and people in Tacoma Park would have no control over who those licenses are. Again, my first, my first interest is to have no change in the law whatsoever. If you're going to go through the change in the law, veto authority is paramount to any decision to go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And if I can just point out for folks' benefits, the, usually there's a beeper that's part of this system for timing for comments. It doesn't seem to be sounding tonight, so as you're speaking, you'll notice that you can see that your time displayed there as well, so I appreciate if you just keep note of that. And I also just wanted to say that, I should have said this before the first speaker, that the reason we're having this second public hearing on this topic is that in the first case, we were talking about broad authority, just in general, the question of whether we should go forward with requesting the local delegation to put in a local bill for some kind of change to the state law, and that as we went through the discussions, we came up with a refinement, so that this is a more specific proposal with the possibility put forward with way more specifics than we had had before, and we thought it would be good to get further comments on this refinement. So that's why we're doing this, just wanted to make sure that people don't think we already came once and commented, why are you doing it again? It's because we have a refined proposal. So, Mr. Dastasio, if you want to testify.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Paul Dastasio, 19 Pine Avenue. I'm glad a beeper isn't working, and since I don't have my glasses on my face, I guess we'll just lively ignore as I ramble on. I'm sure you remember my prior testimony in which I pretty clearly stated my adamant opposition to any change in the law. I think Mr. Lenza was quite articulate in laying out many of the issues. I'd like to add, simply, my opposition is not based on opposition to alcohol. I enjoy certainly a couple of beers with my crabs as much as anybody else. I think in my mind, what stands out is that I have a lot more difficult time getting crabs than I do beer. I just don't see, I don't see the point. We aren't getting any more tax revenue. I don't think that there's anybody here who would argue that it's awful, it's too hard to get alcohol. I mean, you can walk across the DC line, don't let the Maryland revenue folks hear you say that, me say that, but it's certainly not difficult to get. What we are asking for, of course, is more trash, more traffic, more problems, more calls for service for the police. I think that it's pretty clear that if you look at the economics of it, why am I going to apply for a license at the high-rank districts and low-traffic district on Carroll Avenue? Why not just go for New Hampshire Avenue? I got lots of parking and lots of traffic going by, and I can, when I'm done with my beer, I can just toss it out the window. I think that what we're looking at is a situation where we're asking for problems and not getting any benefits. You did, and I'll put on my glasses here, you did ask, pose three questions here, and my answer to number one is no, of course. Should the city ask for legislation allowing off B-class fee? I would say no. I think Mr. Lenza is correct. And for number two, clearly, I would agree, number two, that we should say no. Having failed at number one and number two, because I can count votes, I don't have to be an accountant to do that, I would say that it is absolutely, absolutely critical that the city retain veto power. This is, this is an all-or-nothing issue. If we simply close our eyes and allow Montgomery County to start handing out liquor licenses, or not liquor licenses, but off-premise sale licenses, we are asking for major problems. And that would, we're simply closing our eyes to the reality that the county has its own interests at heart and not ours. And if we, if we haven't learned that in this room after as many years as we've been jerked around by Montgomery County, then we haven't learned anything. And if we think that Montgomery County is going to adequately enforce its own laws in an obscure corner of Langley Park, we are dreaming. I'm not even sure that Montgomery County license officials know that that part of Langley Park is Montgomery County. And if they do, they certainly don't care. It's far enough away from Rockville that the impact is not going to be felt there. It's going to be carried by Tacoma Park. I mean, who's, who calls, whose police show up? Whose Public Works picks up the trash? And whose taxpayers are not going to get any benefit of that? I appreciate your time and attention, and again, I would reiterate, if we're going to go for this, we best have veto power. Thank you very much.
Sorry, I can't figure out the first name. Montenegro? No? Okay. Nicole Francis? And then Preston Quezenberry? And Nick Ham or Hall? Any of those people want to testify?
Hi, my name's Preston Quezenberry, and I'm 6910 West Orland Avenue. I'm actually here, I'm a member of Tacoma Park Silver Spring Cooperatives Board of Representatives, and so I'm here as a representative of the Co-op. Just to start, the Co-op doesn't have an actual formal position on whether the city council should ask the state to change the law and carry out beer and wine. And we also, the Co-op is not committed to actually selling beer or wine in the event that the law is changed. However, the Co-op does want to express that we're interested in exploring the opportunity of selling a specific niche of beer and wine in the event that beer and wine sales are allowed. A recent survey of the members, as part of the Co-op's strategic planning process, revealed that members had a significant interest in the Co-op selling organic and local beer and wine. And one of the Co-op's goals is to support the local and regional economy and to support the distribution of products produced in a socially and environmentally responsible way. So, as a result, if the ban on alcohol sales was lifted, the Co-op would be interested in conducting a market analysis and seriously considering selling local, organic, and biodynamic wine and beer. So in considering the change in the law, we'd like to urge the city council to consider the potential benefits to the local and regional economy, as well as the increase in access to beer and wine produced locally and environmentally in responsible ways that could result if the law were changed and the Co-op were allowed to sell beer and wine. So that's all I have to say, and thanks for your consideration.
Thank you very much for your comments. Anybody else who didn't sign up who would like to testify? And if you can please give us your name, address, affiliation?
My name is Edward Gossman. I am one of four partners in Roscoe's Neapolitano Pizzeria, 7040 Carroll. I am here with my wife, representing Roscoe's, to express strong support to allow off-sale licenses in Tacoma Park. One thing that we would like very much to do is to be able to offer beer and wine to go. And that's just specifically for us, but I think that, you know, people should be able to sell beer and wine from a business perspective, because everybody else can, and we can't. You know, it puts our business district at a competitive disadvantage compared to everything else that's going on around us. And then one other thing, too, that I really want to touch on, if you all do go forward and allow it, is to not hinder the off-sale or the allowance of, to allow beer, individual beers to go. I know that that's an issue, you know, with brown bagging deep beer and malt liquor and stuff like that, but there are so many good beers out there that can only be sold by themselves, you know, because they're larger, you know, specifically 22 ounces or more, multiple brews, and they only put out special brews in these individual bottles. So, yeah, I just wanted to say that, and another thing, too, touching on not being able to generate tax revenue or anything from that, you know, I don't think that that's so important as it is touching on being able to come down to Tacoma Park for one more reason, say, wow, it's a little bit of a cooler city to be able to come out and buy a bottle of wine or get some beer. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to testify? Mr. Lovelace? Bring your microphone.
Hello, my name's Pat Lovelace, again, 7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park, Maryland. You're a favorite peace delegate. I'd like to say one thing, I'm totally opposing to off-site sales of alcohol, partly from personal experiences. I used to live in DC, I used to be able to go in a restaurant or something, wherever I wanted to go, and I used to buy a bottle of beer, and I wouldn't even be 50 feet from the restaurant before the beer was gone. I used to have a problem with drinking. And I'd like to say that there's a lot of youth in our city, there's a lot of drinking and a lot of problems in our city, in our county, in our country. We do not need to start encouraging youth to buy their liquor or their beer or their wine or wherever they want to buy it. We should not be encouraging. We have enough problems already with drugs, alcohol, and gangs. You know, it's like, it's like if you've got a bunch of people with pneumonia, you're going to encourage them to smoke cigarettes next? I don't think so. And I think, you know, if the problem isn't broken... And I think, you know, if the, we have, if the problem isn't broke, why fix it? Why dicker around looking for problems? There ain't gonna be far to find them. We're trying to keep gangs off our street corners, we're trying to keep people from, we have already had robberies, we just had one today, I heard. You know, people are going to be grabbing people's purses and money to support their alcohol habit. They're going to be, they're going to be hanging out in the street corners drinking. You're going to have smells of urine, feces, alcohol, trash, garbage, rats. You're going to have all that problem, right where we don't need it. Because a lot of people, I mean, you think they're going to just buy it and bring it home and enjoy watching the baseball game or something, but it's not always going to work out that way. You're going to have kids out there drinking it on the corner less than a few feet from the store. It'll be gone before they get home. We don't need to encourage that. Tacoma Park, we've led the country in a lot of good areas. We can continue leading in a lot of good areas. There's other ways of making money than selling alcohol to-go. We don't need that. You know, I mean, we've got enough problems, like I just said. We're trying to stop these problems, you know? We've had our buildings tagged by practical jokers and stuff, gang-related crime. We've had people mugged, we've had people attacked over, you know, to support their drug habit. Are we going to make it easier to get alcohol? No. If they want a beer, if I want a beer, I can go to Silver Spring and get it. Or I can go, like the other guy said earlier, he can hike over the DC, DC line and buy it. But again, we gotta try to show people how to be responsible, and encouraging people to drink is not responsible behavior. And how do you know that someone's not going to buy that beer, it leaves the store, you guys ain't responsible for that beer once it leaves the store? Someone could be sharing with a 13-year-old kid, someone could be sharing with a psychotic person on medication, and next thing you know, you got your windows broken, you got juvenile delinquency, you got other problems going on, and a lot of lawbreaking. It's not going to solve the problem by encouraging off-site sales. I am totally, 100%, 100% opposed to off-site sales of alcohol, beer, and wine. Next thing you know, we're going to have more problems. We've got enough problems here in Tacoma Park and surrounding areas. We don't need to encourage it. If it ain't fixed, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. Leave things alone. For once, I, I say leave the problem alone. It's not a problem that, we'll have problems if we, if we legalize off-site sales. Please, don't do it.
Thank you, Pat. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you for your testimony, and we will take this up again in two weeks. Councilmember Schutz.
Yeah, I have a letter that I'd like to have read into the record from a constituent. Can I do that at this point?
Sure.
I don't need to read the whole thing, but it's, it's a letter from a constituent in my ward, from Roger Van Zee at 7322 Glen Side Drive, who is writing in opposition to the, to any of the options that are here in tonight's hearing. So, I won't, I actually won't read it aloud, but I will ask that it be put, I'll give it to you, Barbara, for, for inclusion.
Okay, and I'll just make note of the fact that the clerk has provided us with the comments that have come in from Sarah Walensky, Ronald Davies, and Ross Griksby as well. And those are part of the record. Return. Thank you all, and we'll move on to the next item, which is the first item in our regular meeting agenda, and that's a resolution petitioning the Maryland Administration and the General Assembly to reinstate state shared revenues to municipalities and provide more diverse revenue-raising authority. This is something that has been requested by the Maryland Municipal League. We're trying to make sure that all municipalities are in support of the efforts to make sure that the governor puts the revenues that have been removed back in. That's the main hurdle, but also, there's going to need to be education of the legislature, especially with new people coming in after this fall's elections, that the revenue situation for municipalities is very different from the revenue situation for counties. The, these highway user revenue and police aid revenue cuts were basically offered up by the counties as the best-case scenario, if something had to be lost, lose those. It amounted to a 7% reduction for the counties, while at the same time amounting to a 70%, 7-0% reduction for municipalities. And so, in the process, the city of Tacoma Park lost approximately $578,000 from this year's budget and from last year's budget as well. And this is, this is something that can't continue, it's something that needs to be addressed, and we're basically going with a full-court press to try and make sure that this issue is addressed as soon as possible. And this resolution will be our formal way of being part of this process that MML has put together to impress that upon those we need to impress, and put together a public relations campaign. Would somebody like to introduce the resolution?
Move.
Second.
Move, our councilmember Snapper, second. Our councilmember Siemens, any council comments on this? Councilmember Snapper.
Thank you, Mayor. I really strongly urge the passage of this resolution, and that we continue to work as hard as possible to prevent the ridiculous situation in which the citizens of Tacoma Park pay taxes, gasoline taxes, which are intended to pay for road repair, and then have it captured by the state and counties for other uses. So, I certainly will be supporting this resolution.
And this reflects not only gasoline tax, but also the, whatever the excise tax on purchase of vehicles, sale of vehicles, everything having to do with roads. So, other comments? Is there any public comment on this resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously. The next item is a first reading ordinance authorizing FY 2011 Budget Amendment Number One. I assume the city manager wants to walk us through this one.
Sure, there's quite a bit of detail, so I'll just try to give you the highlights, and would be happy to answer any questions that you have. The changes that would be made to the FY 11 budget basically fall into kind of five categories. The first, as the council is aware, we are financing a portion of the public works facility renovation with bond financing. The budget that the council adopted back in May anticipated that the closing on that bond issue would take place prior to June 30th. It did not actually take place until July, so the budget amendment that is before the council this evening would amend the FY 11 budget to recognize receipt of the $1.5 million in bond proceeds. There were also a series of projects that were included in the FY 10 budget that were not complete as of June 30th, that requires a reappraisal of the funds for those projects, and in some cases, those are grant-funded projects, and it also requires a reappraisal of the revenue associated with those projects. So there's a series of those that are outlined in the agenda cover packet. Since adoption of the budget, we also received news that we had been awarded grant funding that we hadn't anticipated. This is the Montgomery County Prince George's County Gang Initiative that we had talked about, I think it was prior to the August recess. Because that funding had not been, been awarded at the time of the budget adoption, we do need to amend the special revenue funds budget, both expenditures and revenues, to recognize the receipt of that approximately $98,000 in grant funding. Two other changes, as the council may recall from the actual budget process, which is often the case, it was unclear what we would actually end up paying for employee health insurance. We were in discussions with our brokers and also with the city's two bargaining units about making some changes to our health insurance plan. Just for the sake of simplicity, I did not basically allocate money in each individual personnel budget throughout, you know, all the departments, but simply put a contingency factor in with the understanding, as we talked about during the budget process, that that would be allocated to the individual budgets once we had an exact figure. So you'll see a whole series of line items in this four-page budget amendment. And last but not least, we did have some grant funding left over that has not been expended for the renovation of the auditorium. We have about $20,000 that is left. We did not include a community center fund budget in the FY 11 budget, because we assumed all the work would be done. We do need to reappropriate that $20,000, both on the revenue and expenditure side of the community center fund, actually create one.
And, and another way of putting that is, the project came in under budget.
We were able to do what we wanted and have a little extra, that would be correct. So that's sort of a summary. Certainly, if there's questions about any of the multitude of line items, I'd be happy to answer, but that's sort of the high-level changes that are before you this evening.
Okay. Let me make sure that we have this on the table. Does somebody want to move it?
Move.
Second.
Move, our councilmember Snapper, second. Our councilmember Clay. Councilmember Snapper.
Yes, a quick question. What part of the metropolitan branch trail are we, where does that go? Is that the part that goes around the Tacoma Metro Station?
It comes down along by Montgomery College.
Right, right. It's a section of the trail by the college.
Right, yes, okay. I know where it is.
Other questions? Okay. Is there any public comment on this first reading ordinance on Budget Amendment Number One? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next item is first reading ordinance amending Tacoma Park City Code 14.20, allowing for establishment of administrative regulations for use of the auditorium. Ms. Daines is going to walk us through that one.
Good evening. The council may recall that we met with you in mid-July to talk about the operating procedures as far as the use of the auditorium, and staff's recommendation at that time, and the council concurred, that it may be the most efficient way of dealing with that is to develop administrative regulations. Right now, all the rules and policies that are governed, the use of any public facilities, are included within Chapter 14 of the city code. What we have done is prepared a resolution which amends that section of the ordinance entitled Morals and Conduct, which would allow the city manager, upon its adoption, to develop administrative regulations that would determine how the various spaces that are under the public control are, are used. I would like to note that the amendment before you this evening also includes a section which eliminates basically the balance of that particular section of the ordinance. It does three things. The first is it renames it from Morals and Conduct to Public Space and Public Buildings, and in that same section allows for the development of the administrative regulations, which would go into effect July 1st of 2011. The second section basically deletes everything else for a variety of reasons. Some of the references in that particular part of the code are dealt with in other sections of the ordinance, and often are in conflict with those, are dealt with at other state laws, and some of them are just obsolete and no longer relevant. The third section allows for, determines when the revisions would go into place, and depending upon, if, if the proposed revision is approved by the council, the first section, which changes the name and allows the city manager to develop administrative regulations, as well as the second segment, dealing with the getting rid of spitting in the street and all of that, would go into effect immediately. And then those elements of the ordinance which govern, you know, smoking in public facilities, et cetera, would go into effect July 1st, or excuse me, January 1st of this upcoming year. We tentatively scheduled the second reading of this ordinance for September 27th.
And so, the, it's basically the parts of this that are going away, that are struck, are going to come back as administrative regulations?
Essentially, essentially, we're going to get rid of the entire section, rename it Public Buildings, and allow for the development of administrative regulations, which would kind of pick up where all those little bits and pieces are scattered throughout the ordinance that would apply to the use of public facilities. And that would include all of your buildings, as well as the public parks.
I have to say that I kind of hate to see some of these pieces go away. They have some of my favorite language in the code.
I just love the title.
Yeah, I just, there's, there's fun stuff in here. Talking about odors or exhalations, which are offensive, and it talks about necessary house and convenience stations. And I note that if all this goes away, I lose power.
Could you give us an example?
In Section 14.20.200, construction year, House of Religious Worship restrictions, and it says, "You can't work within 500 feet of a church or regularly established house of religious worship during the regular period of morning worship, and in case of an emergency or necessity, work may be permitted by the mayor, director of public works, or fire chief." I didn't know I could permit work. So I'm, I'm losing valuable powers here as these go away. Any other comments on this? Councilmember Siemens.
Hi, dear. I'm trying to understand what we have before us tonight, and first of all, if it is an establishment of administrative regulations, the mayor said that, you know, then those would come back to us, but I don't believe they do, do they?
The council has the option of bringing those back before, before you as a group, and holding a public hearing to gather public comment on them. And then you also have an opportunity during the review period to provide comment to the city manager, as well as anyone in the community. But you would not, they would not come back to you for formal.
But the rules would be passed by the city manager, not by the city council.
They would go through that administrative process as far as they were concerned. It would not be a formal action.
And the final decision is the city manager's hand, not the community's, or not the council's.
Right, but there is, there's a process, a part of that process is, the council has the opportunity to review those regulations and policies, it's basically regulations, not policies, as well as the community, and to provide feedback during that, and you can bring it back to the council as a whole and hold a public hearing and gather additional comments or feedback on the proposed regulations.
Okay, so, the establishment of administrative regulations for the use of the auditorium, so that would include the hours of operation and what kind of activities would be taking place in here? So basically, we're taking this natty problem and washing our hands of it, should we pass this, and turning it over to the city manager?
The council has provided guidance on, on many of those issues during the discussion in, in July.
But we would be giving the final decision to the city manager.
Can I, the city manager wants to?
No, I was just going to mention what Sarah did. I mean, I think part of the intention of the prior discussion was certainly to get the council's input on an issue as important as this. We had done the same thing with the operation of the community center prior to the auditorium. Sarah can correct me if I'm wrong, but my recollection from the prior discussion is that the council understandably had expressed an interest, as once the auditorium had been renovated and in use for some time, you did want us to come back and have another discussion at an appropriate time, so we could all sort of review how things are working, and whether some modifications to the decisions that were made previously is in order. So I, I don't view the execution of these administrative regs as being the final step. I think we've tried to involve the council, and I think the intention was to continue to do that.
All right, and if I can just reiterate that the administrative regulation process basically has a formal part, where if the council wants to bring any opposed administrative regulation before us, we can do that.
It's just not, their adoption is not done by resolution or ordinance, so there's no formal action in that sense.
I, I think I will be voting against this tonight at, at this point. Thank you. But I certainly want to listen to my colleagues.
Councilmember, right.
So, I'm a little bit taken aback, I guess, just because I didn't envision the, the administrative regulations for the auditor- regulations for the auditorium wiping out entire sections of the city code, many of which apply to things beyond the use of the auditorium. You know, if they're reading through this, there is some suggestion that state or county laws supersede it. So I do think I need to study this issue a little bit more closely. I do have a question about whether the city attorney was consulted on this issue.
Yes.
And what was her perspective on the myriad of changes we're suggesting?
She was... it was her recommendation that we eliminate all of these sections.
Okay. It would be really helpful for me, maybe it's somewhere in the city charter, if we could just have a summary of how the administrative process works. Maybe I'm just a little... I'm a little thick on this, and a lot of terms get fly around, and I'm not totally sure exactly what we have the right to review in the process. So it'd be helpful for me to understand that. And I have concern about the administrative authority issue also because of the length of time it's taken for us to get the parking issue resolved in and around my and council member Robinson's ward in the Old Town Business District. And maybe I'm conflating the issues. Maybe it's something else that's slowing us down there. But I just fear that if it's a similar process, we'll be, I don't know, is it nine months or a year?
A year.
A year. And we'll be wanting to do things in the auditorium, but we won't really have figured out the administrative rules or regulations. So, yeah, I think at this point, I'm leaning towards abstaining from the vote until I can get a written explanation of the administrative process and just check in with the city attorney directly on this issue. Thanks.
I can send the link to the part of the ordinance that governs the administrative regulations to each of you, and you can... it's available online in part of the city code.
I think it would be helpful also just to include it in the packet because a lot of citizens, I think, are probably... I know a lot of them are smarter than I am, but they are also probably confused by this issue. So it might be good to have it in the packet when they are kind of thinking about giving us comments, so.
Councilmember Robinson.
It says, "Public spaces and public buildings." That would be the renamed portion?
Correct.
Okay. So does that include streets?
No.
Okay. Does it include parks?
Yes.
Why not streets?
I don't know. There's a whole section in the ordinance that deals with streets.
There's a separate section that deals with streets.
Yeah.
But a lot of the things that have been stricken have to do with streets. So there was some...
And most of those have to deal with unlawful dumping and that types of... those types of activities, which are addressed in either the state law or in the property maintenance.
Would this have to do with kind of activities that people could engage in on the streets? Because those are also stricken from here.
Are you referring to the basketball?
Well, there's... I see basketball and placement of things and privy placement. I mean, there's a lot of, as the mayor says, kind of funny things, temporary barricades and use of land for amusement purposes. There are some amazing things in here, crowd control at theater or places, public amusement. I mean, all of these things could be addressed through the administrative process. Am I right?
Most... most all of those are already addressed in the city ordinance or the city code, either through those rules or those codes that apply to Public Works Department as far as storing stuff in the public right-of-way, you have to get permits, use of barricades. A lot of the dumping or refuse types of things are under the Property Maintenance Code. Littering, activities like that are covered by state law.
Okay.
Others, we've not had any activity at all.
Yeah.
And so it doesn't make sense to continue to include it.
Sounds like a kind of a consolidation and a movement towards the administrative regulation process that started at least a year ago when we started considering, when we adopted the ability to address parking with administrative regulations. And we took some of that code or some of that language from Baltimore, as I recall. Is that fair to say?
Correct. But a majority... none of the things that are being deleted that have nothing to do with the use of the public buildings will be addressed in the administrative regulations. They're just being deleted in their entirety, and there are no plans to do administrative regulations for those at this point.
Okay. I understand. No plans to do administrative regulations for those things. But it's a broad title, "Public Spaces and Public Buildings," which includes all buildings, parks, and some activities which could be placed in there or, depending on the interpretation of that header, "Public Spaces and Public Buildings," if I'm reading that right, if I'm hearing you correctly.
One of the options you may have is, I can talk to the city attorney about adding a definition of what those spaces are.
That might be helpful.
Okay.
I'm also... I didn't quite understand, Mayor, your comment about we could bring certain things back up before us if we had concerns or suggestions. The way I understand it is the city manager would make the... would make the regulations. We could have a public hearing. We could weigh in on those regulations before they were adopted. But it's the city manager's, at her discretion or his discretion, to implement them. If we want to review them, that's where I lost the understanding.
My recollection of the process is that any proposed administrative regulations are published for a public comment period, and there's a formal process whereby the council is notified and has the opportunity to bring that, to say, hey, we want to talk about it.
Here's a... I'm having a hard time thinking of specific examples, but I know that administrative regulations have always been... have already been put in place as regards parking. Let's say that somebody, one of my constituents says, "Really like to change the parking from an hour to three hours," or "Three hours to one hour," or whichever way it went. Does that just go directly to the administration, and the administration renders a... well, not renders an opinion, but changes that specific element based on what you feel is appropriate at that time and place?
In that particular example, the administrative regulations are developed to address those requests for modifications to various parking districts. So the ordinance itself is designed... those, excuse me, those regulations are written to provide clear information in terms of the process to petition for a change in a parking district or for fees or how long they can be done. The individual conditions for each specific district are not addressed in the administrative regulations. It's just the process by which those areas can be designated.
Okay. So let's say that if everybody in the business district decides that they want the parking meter changed from an hour to two hours, or everybody in the neighborhood decides that they want to encourage a kindergarten playgroup in a park, or something that's not already in place, they would come to me and say, "We want a kindergarten playgroup in this park." And I'd say, "Well, let's... you should look at the regulations to see what the process is. Then you should follow the process."
Correct.
So I'm... and if I don't like the process, or if I want to change the process, how do I go about changing that process? That sounds like it's written into the administrative regulations. If I, as a councilperson, have an issue with a part of the process, how do I bring that up to change it?
Oh. Go ahead.
I'll let Sarah answer your most recent question, Councilmember Robinson. But I think one of the comments you just made, if I'm understanding it correctly, I just want to make sure we're not mixing apples and oranges. I'm guessing you might have been alluding to residential parking permit areas?
No, I'm not alluding to really anything. I'm trying to get a handle on how we on the council address process that's put in place in the administrative regulations themselves.
I just wanted to make sure, because if it's a residential parking permit area, that is outside the administrative reg process, and those are actually established by the council, so.
Okay. No, I'm not talking about...
There's sort of a mixture of parking issues and how they're handled.
Okay. And it's a mixture of powers that I'm confused with a little bit, too. As you elucidate that one, I wasn't aware of that. But what if it is part of the administrative regulation process, and we want to change it, one or more of us wants to change it? How do we go about doing that?
I would suggest talking to the city manager and going through that process, because there's... administrative regulations like ordinances are not cast in stone forever. There is an opportunity to revise them to address changing circumstances or expectations. The process to make those amendments is very similar, if not exactly the same, as going through and adopting them in the first... or establishing them in the first place. So say you decided you didn't really like the way parking meter districts were established for the cost for that.
Well, let's say that there was a petition process, and it required 80% of the population to say they wanted something. And four of us decided that we wanted it to be 60%. How do we get it changed from 80% to 60%?
There would be two ways. One, you could make that or express that concern during the process that the administrative regulations are being established.
Let's say it's after they've been established.
Or then you could go and talk to the city manager about amending the administrative regulations to address that. You would then go through the same public notification and public comment process as the regulations had when they were initially established.
So we have the power to bring them back up and have a public hearing and process?
Correct.
Okay. And I guess I'd like to see, as councilmember Wright, I'd like to see where that's... how that's put in place and how we would do it. And until I do that, I think I'll abstain or vote against this as it is, because I just don't have a clear enough understanding of it.
Councilmember Schultz.
As I understand it, what basically... why we're trying to do this, when I say "we," I'm talking about the city council and staff together, is to create more flexibility in the use of public buildings and public spaces, however we define it, and not less flexibility. If every... if all the minutia of how a building needs to be used or a space like this is cast in ordinance, obviously, it requires much more time and process to alter it than it is if it's an administrative regulation. So in theory, it should be easier to, if I'm correct, if that's our goal here, to modify an administrative rule rather than a city ordinance. I think that's where we're getting a little concerned here, is it sounds like it... and not saying that it is, but it's just sort of... I'm getting the impression that it sounds like it's more like as complicated a process as it would be to actually amend an ordinance. I mean, to put it in another way, or put it in the form of a question, let's just say that we go through this whole... we adopt this resolution or this ordinance establishing administrative regulations, and they get heard and discussed and adopted by the... executed by the city administrator and put into place. And then we use this room here for a period of time, and through the use of this, we learned that some of the original rules that were set up or regulations just aren't as practical as we thought they were going to be. And so there's a sentiment from people in the community that use this building for various purposes that certain rules need to be changed. How would that actually... how would that happen if that was the case? And there was, you know, some performance artists or others who want to have access to this find that it's just not working for whatever aspect of the regulations they might be wanting to change. So what would... how would they go about doing that?
The administrative regulations, as I've drafted them, are very general in terms of hours of operation, fee structure, permitted activities, how it gets... how it is to be reserved, and the different tiers of users that we had talked about in July. It's not, as I'm doing it now, it's not specific in terms of these... only these types of activities will be proposed.
Well, let's say that permitted uses. We find that, you know, through experience, it comes to realization that permitted uses needs to be broadened or narrowed, let's just say. It might be because it's being overly used, and we need to narrow it, or there's just the opposite, one way or the other. How would that... how would we go about changing that? Or with the... through this ordinance, how would that process go?
If it's something... again, if it's something that the city council felt was important to revisit, you can go back through that, working with the city manager. The way these are drafted, there are a couple of things to keep in mind. Like the parking meter, regulations governing parking meters and parking districts, there is a provision within there for an annual review of what the fees are, the costs are, and that gets incorporated within the budget process. So if there's a decision that we're charging too much or too little for this space, that would come up during the budgeting process on an annual basis. If a similar type of activity that would come up during that process that would not necessarily require an amendment of the regulations themselves would be hours of operation, because there's a budgetary implication with that. If, for example, you decided you didn't want jugglers or sword swallows in this space for liability issues, frankly, things like that will... uses are proposed that are not appropriate for this space because of liability concerns, or they've used the space in the past, and they're not good people, they don't pick up after themselves, or it was damaged. Those types of activities, my assumption is we would not approve the rental of the space for them, just on a case-by-case basis. And the way these are structured, it gives the city manager or his or her designee that authority to say, "It didn't work out in the past," or "That's just not an appropriate use for this particular space." But if there was something specific within the regulations, the way it was drafted, that was not working after a year or six months, you can go back to the city manager and say, "You know, I really don't like this. I thought it was going to work, but it's not." And we can go back through the whole review process or revision process again.
Thank you. I appreciate your explanation. But it still seems to me that we're not making things any simpler. We're still sort of saying that the city council needs to be involved in requesting the city administrator to make changes. And then that kind of defeats the whole point of trying to delegate that authority down to the city administrator. And my vision was that, you know, that once we laid out the broad parameters, as we pretty well done, of how this particular space should be used, just as an example, that from that point on, it becomes the city administrator's responsibility to write the rules and to change those rules as the situation evolves, because we're sort of saying by delegating it, we don't want to have to be bogged down. The city council get involved in these kinds of decisions, that they need to be able to be made quickly and swiftly as circumstances change and opportunities arise. If they have to keep coming back to us in some process, then I'm not sure what we've gained through all of this.
Our goal is not to keep bringing this back to you. Our goal is to develop administrative regulations to provide appropriate guidance in terms of how this space is to be used and to give flexibility on a case-by-case basis in terms of specific uses or users. And then also recognize that over time, operating costs and staffing issues and things like that will also change.
Well, that part I understand. I mean, all this has to be in the context of a budget, and all of this has to be done in the context of sort of annual reviews. But I'm just sort of talking about the space in between. But that's... as far as the rest of the idea of deleting all these other provisions, I'm actually amazed that all of this stuff is still in the city code. This is stuff that's quaint and historic and belongs down the street on Carroll Avenue in the Tacoma historical space. I mean, it's worth everybody's reading it, because it shows how civilization has evolved over the last hundred years. over the last hundred years, but keeping it in the ordinance, basically, I'm just saying that if, trusting that if staff says that this stuff is obsolete or redundant or already obviated by state and federal regulations and the city attorney agrees, I take your word for it.
Oh, that's just hopeful.
Yeah, hopeful, yeah.
I know there are other colleagues who have comments they want to make. If I can suggest that we have not moved this ordinance, that we might want to just revisit this another week? So I'd like to suggest that we do that and go to comments by other folks, but not beat this around too much more. We still are going to try and get to the strategic plan discussion tonight that we didn't get to last week. And so, Councilmember Clay.
I bet you didn't think this was going to open this can of worms, did you?
I'm a little surprised, I will admit, yes.
So I support using administrative regulation over code where possible for all of the reasons that Councilmember Schultz already articulately put forth. And I also, but I also think that it's clear that there are a lot of folks here who want to talk about that process more before we make these changes. And I think also that people are a little startled by the breadth of the changes. Even though I support all of them, it's only reasonable that folks spend a little bit more time digesting them and that we maybe have another conversation about this then before we bring it back to a vote because we clearly need to schedule some more time and we have these other things to do. So I was going to suggest that we, that we table.
Councilmember Snipper.
Yeah. Thank you, Councilmember Clay. I think I would only, at this point, I would only add that what might be useful is that when it comes back, it comes back as two pieces. That is, the piece deleting the obsolete, irrelevant, superseded sections, that's one piece. And then a second piece be the change in the public space and public buildings that, I don't know exactly how to make it clear because it seems like there's a lot of confusion over the two different pieces. I thoroughly support using regs over code, particularly in this situation. I do have one concern, which I'll just ask about, and that is a concern there might be a gap. As proposed here, there is a gap. That is, the deletion of a whole bunch of stuff occurs immediately and there's a process for the regs getting in place, and that process hasn't begun even. So there would be a gap when, you know, regulations of privies and similar things will get, no, there'll be a space between. So what I would like is there not be a gap. That is, that we have one or the other. We either have an ordinance controlling the things that need to be controlled or regulated and there not be gaps.
This does, as it's been drafted, that does allow for that. Everything that we want to get rid of in its entirety forever and never want to talk about again goes into effect immediately upon adoption at the second meeting.
And the other steps in January?
The other stuff that applies to the use of the public buildings and public spaces remains in place and valid until January 1st, 2011, when the administrative regulations will be in effect. So there is no gap, per se, for the use of this space in particular until that, those administrative regs are, have gone through the process.
And you believe the regulations will be in place by January?
Time schedule says yes.
My concern is that it has, on occasion, taken us longer to do regs. That's why I was concerned about it.
I'm not anticipating any delay, but I'm often surprised.
Okay. Just a concern I have.
Councilwoman Simmons.
Thank you. I just may not know enough, but it seems to me that this has a significant effect over the control of how this facility is used. And so I think that it's important for me and the rest of the council to understand exactly what we're looking at here. But I think it's also important for us to hear from the advisory committee that we have appointed with the recreation committee. And I would want to hear where their, what their position is on this, too, if my understanding of what's involved is correct.
I can, if you'd like, I can make additional copies of the recommendations of the subcommittee for the auditorium. Those were provided to the council in July when we had this conversation in terms of their feedback. Would you like solicit additional feedback from them on that or?
And it's not something necessarily you have to do. I think we can talk with our committee and maybe their feedback.
Have you any clarification? They may still be meeting in December.
No, I think staff's confusion is that we had felt it was important to touch base with the advisory committee before the council held its discussion in July. So they had been consulted before those proposals ever came forward, so.
No, I, thank you for that. I just, this is new to me, what I'm seeing here tonight, and I haven't heard specifically from the advisory committee what their opinion is of this.
The advisory committee is disbanded. If you'd like, we can.
That's the auditorium, the auditorium committee, but we still do have the recreation committee, which I think is involved.
Right, as well as Arts and Humanities Commission, so we can bring them back. The Arts and Humanities Commission is taking the lead on this particular, the use of, in particular with some of the free programming, but we'll be glad to share all the information with everyone.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we're going to not move forward with this this week. We'll bring it back at the earliest convenience, maybe next week.
May I ask a question before you move on? I just want to make sure. We will send out a copy of the administrative reg process. I guess just for your reference, we'll just send a link back to any information we had from the advisory committee, just so you don't have to look for it. There was a suggestion by Councilmember Snipper, but no one else weighed in, as to whether or not any amendment should be broken into two pieces. Obviously, that's just sort of a simple exercise in terms of the drafting of an ordinance, but it wasn't clear to me if that's something that staff was to prepare or not, or is that something you want to decide the next time you talk about it?
It sounded like maybe that concern was addressed by Ms. Daines. That's the way I took it.
No.
Because you didn't want the gap.
No, that was a separate issue.
Oh, okay.
It seems like there's two things you're trying to accomplish. One is eliminating a bunch of sections that are no longer relevant, and I didn't hear anyone on the council, except humorously, exploring any of these. And then the second thing you wanted to accomplish was moving the policy and procedures about the auditorium into administrative regs. And I was just suggesting that those two things be explicitly separated rather than kind of integrated here. Because I was ready to, you know, vote for this thing, but my council fellow council members were not, and I was offering this idea as a way of at least moving the deletion forward. That could be done quickly.
And we could send that back to you next week.
I was just trying to get a sense if that was the council's pleasure or not.
I think it makes it easier.
Yes.
Simplifies.
Is there any other information that the council would like staff to provide you prior to the next discussion?
Councilwoman Robinson.
I see that under the third whereas, it says that the current Tacoma Park Code provisions on the use of public parks, public space, and public buildings and permits for the use of the same will be repealed. That's not the section we see down here repealed. Am I correct in that?
The section that that is referencing is located on page three, 14.20.180.
Oh, I got it.
And again, all of those rules will remain in place until the administrative regulations are established.
All right, thank you. I was, I didn't realize that those provisions were listed starting on page three. Now I see that, so I appreciate it.
And they continue on to the top of page four.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
I just want to be clear that on the regulation information, to have both what it takes to do a new regulation as well as to change, I mean, that's obvious, but.
It's all part of the same document that we're sending.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Last item of the regular meeting is the consent agenda. We have five items, single reading ordinance awarding a contract for tree maintenance, permitting and tree removal to each of three companies. Then the resolution supporting Montgomery Housing Partnerships renovations to the Edinburg House, and a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign a memorandum of agreement with the community ban.
I can move it.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Siemens, seconded by Councilmember Robinson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We'll take a short break and we'll come back for our final item, which is our annual review of the strategic plan.
We should be able to knock that off in a couple of minutes.
and now we can go back and call the roll.
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Snipper?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we officially have a consent agenda since there were first reading ordinances on there. Final item for this evening is annual review of the strategic plan. I'm going to come up with that item here. And just a reminder that we need to, we said we wanted to review the strategic plan every year and talk about any changes that need to be made, and the staff recommends considering reducing the number of priority projects and initiatives under each goal. And I guess the deputy city manager is going to just kind of go over staff's recommendations, then there will be an opportunity for the council to consider those, consider our own, and review the strategic plan.
Thank you. Staff went through and, as we always do, kind of went through and thought a little bit about the strategic plan and how it might function in the current and coming fiscal years. And I think our, one of the key things that we wanted to look at was were there some things that were done or, and that we can move on from? And the second was, given the fact that we went through a very difficult budget year and do have fewer staff available and some fewer resources, to try to see if that made some, gave us some direction about which items might take higher priority or identifying which ones just are more intensive of staff resources that we're shorter of. And so we wanted to go through and try to identify those. We did kind of a quick hit, so I'm not going to say that we're completely thorough on this, and we're very interested in the council's thoughts. But one of the things I guess I want to start with was we went through the goal of a financially sustainable community. And while our assumptions don't change, I think one of the things that we want to think about, especially with the financially sustainable issues, the fact that there's a few topics and few areas where we have some money. The Speed Camera Fund, which can be devoted to the pedestrian safety and traffic safety initiatives, is one that's particularly noticeable. And so it may be that items that, where there's some money, we put some higher priority if it's otherwise in line with the council's goals. The other point I guess I wanted to make was that many of the items under this actually kind of come in the city manager's bailiwick in terms of different long-range financial plans and a variety of kind of evaluations. And two things I guess I'd like to remark on that, and the first is that a whole lot was done during the last budget session about what, how, you know, what kind of core services we can staff and what that might mean for having to cut the budget and having to cut the staff. But there are some things that do take some added work, and it's probably not something that we'll be able to tackle while trying to balance a number of the other initiatives and just kind of the goals of managing with those fewer staff. One of the things that we are interested in pursuing, whether or not I think it's in the strategic plan, is a way, is a task force, a staff task force, to look at reducing some health care costs. And both of the unions have expressed a strong interest in participating in a discussion about a different way to provide health care, health insurance, well, you know, kind of wellness on the job and that kind of thing, to both make people healthier, but also to bring down some of the health care burden that we have in terms of our expenses. One of the things that I do want to note under key indicators says the indicator of increase in cities' property tax base might not be appropriate right now as an indicator to show that things are working. It may be something that we would want to compare to other similar jurisdictions or areas. So that even though our property tax base might be decreasing, it might not be decreasing as fast as some of the other places, or it may be holding stable, which could be a good indication that what we're doing is right as opposed to just not increasing the property tax bases. So that's something that I'd like you to consider. We didn't have a lot on the environmentally sustainable community, I think because one of the initiatives or efforts that will be undertaken is a review of the task force recommendations and the task force on environmental action. And I think that that will give a lot of direction as to kind of priority initiatives, and we'll need to look and see what we are able to accomplish with the existing resources that we have in that. And I think there's a lot of interest in that, and it would seem that it makes more sense to kind of defer to that process than to try to guess from the list that was included in the strategic plan, which was prepared before their work was done. We had a number of recommendations on the economically sustainable community goal, and primarily those recommendations had to do with some of the housing, housing-related items. And we can go through those when we get to that point. I think these are fairly kind of minor tweaks as we go through this. But one of the assumptions that I think that we might want to add are that while limited compared to the surrounding area, foreclosures will continue adversely impacting residential neighborhoods in the community. And also, another assumption perhaps to add would be increasing property taxes and continued economic conditions will adversely impact the local business community, increasing rents of smaller independently-owned businesses. of smaller independently-owned businesses and the operating costs of commercial property owners. So those may be some factors that we want to consider as we look at the priority projects. Under the livable community, this is one where I think there's, there's two major items. The first is that we didn't really have much listed about the role of the auditorium in the strategic plan, and this is an exciting area for showcasing our cultural activities in the community. It does come, of course, with some staff resources that need to be devoted to that. And so I think recognizing that we're, in some respects, on the hook for, for doing this work is important. Another item would be to recognize that the police department is facing a lot of challenges right now, and I think may not be able to take on some new initiatives. And the final goal, an engaged, responsive, and service-oriented government, I think that one of the things that we'd like to put into the category is, let me just double check, I've got my information. One of the recommendations of the strategic plan for this engaged and responsive, service-oriented community, government, had to do with off-site council meetings, kind of walking council meetings. And while it's very useful to be out in the community, sometimes they do take a lot of staff time to coordinate those, and so we'd like just to have that be part of the recognition that as those are scheduled, kind of a recognition of the staff impacts that those have, it may be the appropriate thing to do, but that also means that they may not be able to do some other things. And I think the clerk's office in particular has gotten quite affected by that in the past. And I think those were the key points, but there's lots of small details, and we're open to, we really want to hear from you, and this is, this is your document.
Thank you. Councilmember Snipper?
I have lots of interesting things to say, but a quick comment at the outset. I do believe that every single one of these strategies, programs, initiatives, has the following phrase attached to it, and maybe we should have been explicit, "time and resources This is a phrase that I use all the time in my work. I promise all kinds of things that the Department of Health and Human Services will do, "time and resources permitting." And there is that, I believe, assumption on all of this stuff. I don't really think we need to say it sporadically through it. I think perhaps we should have been more clear at the beginning, in the introduction, that all of these come with that caveat. And the whole point of listing them was that later we would come back and say, "This year we're going to focus on these, next year we'll focus on these other ones," or some similar balancing to take account of the fact that we don't have unlimited time and we don't have unlimited resources.
Thank you very much. I think that one of the things that maybe staff was reacting to sometimes in this list is that sometimes there's a sense that all of these have kind of equal weight. And so the more that there's a little bit of sense that, yes, but the council really, really wants to do this, is helpful for us when we're trying to identify whether, whether time and resources are permitting. You know, obviously, we'd like to be advancing your, we'd like to be advancing your causes as best we can.
And you had a particular request for prioritizing the projects in the financially sustainable goal. Or was that just an example?
That was one that we, I think that was one that we particularly are interested in, but all of these, the more that guidance that you can give, the more helpful it is. Thanks.
Okay. Did you have other comments that you wanted to make on?
Well, I have the floor. Yeah. Or the mic.
Other self-described very interesting comments?
I did say that, didn't I?
You did.
That was, that was a, yeah, that was a slip. Most of the time, they're not. One of the, a process, I'm not very good at process, but I, so I'll try to be explicit about this part of the process. I know I, and I've talked to other members of the council, don't necessarily have a really good idea of what the time and staff and money resources are for these things. So we are dependent on staff to come back and say, as you have actually indicated in the comments, that some of these are very resource-intensive or will take many years to do, with some similar comment that you've already made. And those are very valuable because you're the ones who've done similar things before, and you're going to have the best guess as to what they'll cost going in the future. So we might, I might open it to any one of these. "Developing collaboration with local schools, an interdepartmental five-year plan, including involvement of the rec and police departments, to provide appropriate and cooperative programming designed to improve the health and safety of city residents." I have no idea what the time and resources would be for doing that. Staff may not either, but you're going to have a better idea than, than we do. So I think the comments that you have made are very, that staff have made are very valuable in this. And I strongly encourage more of them along those, those lines, giving us a sense of what's, what's, you know, how long it will take. This is a, you know, this is a three-year project, this is a six-month project. This will take, you know, the entire Department of X in order to do and cost us millions of dollars, and this other one will be relatively cheap. I mean, those are the things that the council, I know I would benefit from, in addition to what you already have here. And I'll stop there.
Councilmember Robinson?
Under financially sustainable community, I would, I think a good strategy for us to add is to find ways to reduce financial risk. I, I think that's a good, I don't know if my colleagues agree, but I think it's a laudable goal, my own interesting idea, but find ways to reduce financial risk. So I'd like to see that in the strategy section. And one way to do that, I would put at the very last section, very last sentence of the priority projects and initiatives. I would put, "Establish staff work groups to look at ways of reducing staff health, health insurance costs," comma, or maybe no comma, "and conversion of defined benefits programs to defined contribution programs," comma, "with participation by the city's two labor unions." I link, I put that in there because I link the two together, that our defined benefits programs are high-risk, fiscal high-risk. And I think that looking, starting that process, looking at it is a good, good strategy. The other one I have is economically sustainable community. I'm a little uncomfortable with the ad, the second ad, "increasing property taxes and continued economic conditions." I think you mean continued negative economic conditions. "Will adversely impact the local business community, increasing rents of smaller independently-owned businesses and the operating costs of commercial property owners." I was at a conference last, this, last week where a guy came in who was expert in renegotiating leases, a real pro. It was an astounding presentation, and he, he takes the position that the rental market is a different beast now than it was two years ago, and that you can't get 45 bucks a foot for a commercial space in a lot of places. Now it's 30 bucks a foot, and landlords have to, it's a new world, and an appropriate solution to that difficulty is that you renegotiate the lease. So that's an example of why I don't necessarily think that increasing rents of smaller independently-owned businesses is, is the right thing to say. It might be that we say something like, "Rising energy costs and potential drops in consumer spending may increase the challenges for local businesses." I think that, that rings more true to me than what, than what you have here. And that's it.
Councilmember Clay?
Well, so I guess I will support Councilmember Robinson in adding reduction of financial risk as a goal, or at least in continuing the discussion. We think that the city manager and the staff probably do that as an integrated part of their job. But maybe what's more relevant to your interest is whether or not we would then create a priority project out of that around the healthcare and the benefits. And it sounds like the healthcare part of it is already underway, so what's really left is whether or not we want to tackle the benefits issue. And so it might be interesting to, at some point, hear from the city staff what they think about that, and I don't want to set them off on a wild goose chase essentially. So, so I guess I would like to hear, not, you know, on the fly right now, but, but, you know, at some point, some, some feedback around that. I would agree also with what Councilmember Snipper had to say. I, I think that, you know, we've, we've slogged through getting this created and then said we'd come back and work on it again in the, in the following year. And, and one of the things that we were going to talk about was better delineating the timelines for things, which also in the process creates a priority list. And so I would like to, to see what that looks like today as it lays out in a timeline. If you were going to ask the council to do it, I'd have to, you'd have to give me the information, as Councilmember Snipper said, and the information that I would have to have is how much each project costs and how much time it took by department, and what was the capacity of each of those departments, and what was our fiscal capacity. So it would be like a little logic puzzle. I'm really good at logic puzzles. I did well on that part of the GRE. But it would probably be easier and probably come to about the same results if you went through that process as you do when you do the budget process. And I don't think that you'd get largely different results from us, and we kind of moved that, but it would maybe be best to see what it looks like laid out in a matrix, as that has become, you know, the very popular way to look at all of this stuff. And my final comment in this round of comments is that I would like to see the, the strategic plan simplified so that we can communicate it better to residents. I think the process of going through all of the development of the assumptions and some of the wordier pieces was, was good, we were kind of getting the framework down, but I would, I would really like to see us have a small brochure that we could give out to folks that, you know, had livability, sustainability, and what I once called accountability, but is now some long-convoluted title. And under that, we'd have the goals and the priority projects without all of the assumptions and other materials that are around it, so that we could readily communicate that to people and have a discussion piece. And then if people were really interested in it, they could come back and we could, you know, we could have a document of the underlying assumptions and things like that. One of the things that I note about that is I don't agree with every underlying assumption, and when I argue in the priority projects anyway, I argue against the ones where I don't agree with, with the underlying assumption, and for ones where other people didn't agree, and try to find some other way to get them. So I'm not sure how useful they are sort of moving forward, because politics always enters into it, but, but that's, that's my thought.
So you're revealing all your secrets here.
You, I'm sure it's not a secret to you.
I'm shocked, shocked.
I know. There's only so many times I was willing to go back and forth around the underlying assumptions around rent control before I decided we would just move on and talk about something else.
Councilmember Wright?
I agree with the concept sort of that Dan was proposing in the financial sustainability, financially sustainable community, mainly because I think this idea of the five-year projection on expenditures was intended to deal with some of this, and since we probably don't have time to do that, if there are some just high-risk areas, like, you know, one of the things in the five-year plan was just getting a handle, a little bit on all of our building infrastructure costs, right? First, we do that for vehicles now, but we don't do it for replacing cost-related buildings, or the, the potential for the defined benefits plan to create a significant crater in the budget at any given moment. And then I couldn't agree more with Councilmember Clay. As I reread this, I actually had another copy that I'd marked up, I don't know where it went. As I reread this, I realized like, it is just kind of crazy how much stuff is in there. And it made me think back.
Wonder where it came from.
Well, no, I think it's very true.
And I wonder what process brought that about.
Yeah. Who drafted that thing?
But I generally think like the, the con, the high-level concepts are good, and we have down into like too much detail, and we need the high-level concepts. And something that I remember very distinctly during the, the last election cycle, which was a gentleman in my ward, I forget his name now, but I can look it up, who, who does this for a living. He goes around to different cities and, and countries, I think. He does it mostly in the developing world and really helps them focus. And this isn't a criticism of Bruce, I think this is more a criticism of the model of government we have. We don't have a strong mayor model of government. We have a strong, strong city manager model of government, which means the day-to-day services get very, delivered very well, but there's not a strong person who sets the policy. And it's not, that's, it's designed that way. The, the model of government we have is not a strong mayor. And so we're forced to have seven of us up here kind of trying to get all these things in there, and you get too much, basically, and not enough focus. And as I read back through this, having done strategic planning as a consultant, I was just like, God, did we really? I guess we got very tired at the end of the day, and we were just like, okay, we'll leave it in there, we'll revisit it. But yeah, definitely, it's not something that, I think, if you were hired as the new city manager and you were to pick this up and read it, you would be like, holy moly, what the hell am I supposed to do first? And I think that should sort of be the test for a strategic plan, that someone who comes in, asked to run the city, or a resident, would be able to pick up the strategic plan and relatively quickly say, this is what the priorities are. You know, Adrian Fenty, whether he's going to win or lose, was very clear, like, he's going to deliver on schools, he's going to deliver safety, and he's going to deliver services, you know, basic services. That was his thing. He's focused on it and done a pretty good job at it. This is an endorsement.
He didn't promise to be polite in the process.
He didn't promise to be polite. Right, so, but, so.
We should add, that is one of our strategic points.
To be polite? We always are polite.
Oh, that's true.
How about this?
Have a look.
Yeah, so that's, that's, it, it almost feels like if we just gave it to one of us, we'd probably have a.
Councilmember Clay?
We'd come out with a more refined document we might all be happier with.
Councilmember Schultz?
Well, I think we're fortunate that this didn't get etched in stone like the Constitution of the United States of America, so that it can in fact be changed without getting half of Tacoma Park in an uproar, trying to threaten each other.
And we don't have to use administrative rights to do it.
Right, thank goodness. I wasn't he, on the, serving on this city council when you guys went through.
Plausible deniability.
Hey, you take the plausible deniability where you find it. But it certainly does, this document, you know, I respect the likely agony and the challenges that you all went through in trying to adopt, and I can picture that very easily in my mind. But by virtue of that fact, I guess I come to this document, reading it over the last month or two, several times. month or two, several times, kind of like with a, you know, fresh, sort of a different perspective perhaps than the rest of my colleagues up here. And one of the things that occurs to me, jumped out at me, is the things that the strategic plan doesn't address just seems to ignore in its entirety. And I don't know what that means, does it, if something is not included in the strategic plan, I guess is that tantamount to saying that this is nothing that the city is particularly interested in? Obviously, I don't think that's the case. But on the other hand, I can't quite understand, or have yet to figure out, how a lot of stuff seemed, that I would think would be important to a lot of citizens in this city, didn't get included in this document in the first place. But for example, the section on environmental sustainability makes little reference to the actual live environment. I mean, it doesn't talk about tree preservation, it doesn't talk about our deteriorating tree, mature tree canopy, which is of course a concern, nor or the tree ordinance, and doesn't address anything about our plant life in the city or invasive species, doesn't mention our water courses, air, noise pollution, light pollution, or community gardens. It seems like, the environmental section seems to have paid more attention to do with transportation, such as sidewalks and bikeways. And while those are worthy things, obviously to all of us, I'm not sure what they have to do with the environment. And buildings, such as the Department of Public Works Building, which is now under construction, which again only has tangentially to do with the environment with regard to its geothermal and some of its stormwater runoff assets. So, you know, with regard to that, I'm thinking, well, these are all important topics to our community, but they're not sort of referenced in any of the priorities, or any of the assumptions, or any of the indicators. And likewise, the economic section, economic sustainable community addresses, puts a lot of emphasis on housing affordability, as it should, and encouraging homeownership. But it seems to say less than it could about the goal of reducing commercial vacancies, realizing redevelopment potentials, such as for example Tacoma Junction, increasing retail diversity or preserving retail diversity, issues with commercial signage, which we know has been something that's been a particular concern in the Tacoma Langley area, improving access to businesses and off-street parking. It does mention the idea of partnering with certain business organizations, but it really doesn't talk about what partnering actually means. And then the third area is the subject of emergency preparedness. I would think that after the rather scary situation we faced with the February blizzards, that, well, I know that this makes emergency preparedness a bit more of a real concern to communities. And we keep hearing about it, and we know we have an emergency preparedness committee, but there's no reference to the need for emergency preparedness as a priority, or anything to do with, say, the continuity of, preparing a continuity of operations manual, which I understand that that committee has been working on for quite some time, or any of the issues that arose out of our post-blizzard discussions, like what happened, how did we handle it, what did we do well, you know, in terms of communications and helping people who were kind of snowbound for a period of time, and so forth. I don't need to go on and sort of drag out the details on that, but I just think that this is an area that deserves some sort of priority or acknowledgement in the strategic plan, because it's something that staff may or may not be asked to give time to, you know, in the normal course of running our city. So I'm not really, my remarks here aren't really addressing so much the content of what's in there right now, and what needs perhaps to be deleted or modified, but more what doesn't seem to be present, or just barely present, in the overall document as it was originally drafted. So I just would like to see some of these things put into the strategic plan somehow or at some point in time. Thank you.
Councilmember Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. It's been interesting to listen to the different perspectives as each of my colleagues has talked about the strategic plan, and I certainly appreciate Ms. Ledlow's recommendations for changes. I think there's some good suggestions here from everyone. I'm curious, what's our process, Mr. Mayor? Are we just going to say, okay, this is it, let's do it tonight? Or is there going to be some ongoing discussion of this? Because it sounds like there's a lot of ideas on the table. And I particularly remember the gentleman that Councilmember Wright mentioned this evening, who had offered his services to help us with a new version of the strategic plan when we get to the point of wanting that. He had, it sounded like extensive experience, he had some good, interesting criticisms of the first document that we came out with, which is the one we're talking about tonight. And I know that several of the council members at that time were hopeful that we could engage his services to upgrade to the next level of strategic plan. So what is the plan for the plan?
I'd say that's up to us to decide here tonight. Did you have any more comments?
Yes.
About particular pieces? Because I had a few as well.
Okay. I would, again, support some of the overall suggestions that were made, particularly, I think, the idea of the overall view of resources permitting, I think is, needs to be defined at the beginning of this. But I also hear Ms. Ledlow's request that we also include some type of prioritization so that there's a better understanding by staff on where we want our limited resources expended, because should we just leave it to staff to decide? I'm sure the council will not agree with the choices the staff makes. So I can understand, rather than ask staff to throw darts and hope that they hit the one we want, if we could give some priorities, that would be helpful. There are some, you know, specific things that I would like to see added or modified in the plan, and I think probably the best way for me to do that, if Ms. Ledlow is going to be organizing these, would be for me just to email those to her rather than take up our precious minutes here tonight. And then that would be included in our future discussions, but wouldn't have to go through it in detail tonight. Other than that, I would just, I would like to suggest that we do reach out to the community members, specifically the gentleman in Mr. Wright's ward, and ask for some assistance in maybe facilitating a discussion of strategic plan from someone who has the experience. And I think we have now some experience too, so I think it would be a good next step.
By the way, I do recall seeing his name in the minutes, I think, of one of our last meetings in the Azalea Room.
I have his name, I just started with.
Okay. I appreciate all my colleagues' comments. As I was listening and thinking about Ms. Ledlow's request for some prioritization, particularly within the financial area, I looked at the items there, and if everybody could turn to page seven of the strategic plan, which is in our packet, and look at the top of the page, which is the continuation of the priority projects and initiatives, as I was looking at this, I kind of came up with what may be helpful as a way forward, as a prioritization there, and as a way to proceed and get some of the input. And I think this may make some sense, see if you agree. If you look at the fourth bullet, what I'm going to look at is look at the fourth, second, and first bullets in that order. The fourth one is finalize the report of the Montgomery County Tax Duplication Task Force worked toward the implementation of the recommendations of the report. Coordinate lobbying activities with the Maryland Municipal League on statewide efforts to improve municipal revenue options. Well, we already had the resolution this evening tying our support into the statewide effort that the Maryland Municipal League is now undertaking to look at ways to get back where we were on municipal revenue options, and continue the effort that had been going on for, I believe, two or three years now, to find other ways to get municipal revenues. That kind of takes the revenue side. That is an ongoing effort that we've been trying to get other people's attention on for years. We took the initiative on the Tax Duplication Task Force. We are the ones who forced its creation, and I think we've got to see that through to the end of the process, no matter what that is. I think if you then go to the second bullet, develop a long-term plan for the sustainable financing of capital projects and ongoing operational costs. Identify, evaluate, and implement strategic and creative financing options such as revenue enhancements, privatization of services, and asset shedding. And then the first bullet above that, continue to measure residents' perceptions of city services and community through the use of the Tacoma Park Resident Survey. Develop other means of measuring the community's satisfaction with the services and programming offered by the city. I think they kind of get to the expenditure side and the effort that we've said that we need to go through as we look forward to our next budget discussion in the spring, that we need to have talked among ourselves and with our residents about what the priorities are, where we need to go, how we need to be in a position to address what we're going to have to address in that coming budget discussion. So I would propose that that grouping of those three bullet items in that section are essentially our marching orders for priority going forward, that we need to engage residents of this community and ourselves in a process that we find out exactly what we need to know to understand the priorities of the community going forward, and what we can afford and what we can't afford. And that will lay out much of the rest of what we need to find out. I don't think we need to kind of go through a whole, you know, strategic plan process of, gee, we need input on all of these things, here's, you know, here's the 50 things, here's how we're going to prioritize them, what do you think? If we do that, I think that will drive a lot of what we need to do.
I, if I may, I kind of agree with you. One of the things that I know we discussed during the budget process was that need to engage the community on their desires for services and where we can consider making some cuts because we anticipate decreased revenues for the coming year, and also rising expenses in areas such as our staff benefits. But I would like to see that as we do that, that we include some of the expert help in not necessarily starting from scratch to modify or develop a new strategic plan, but on having that expert help and assistance as we work on modifications of this plan. Again, I think that the, some of the discussions that I remember from the time that we completed this and implemented this strategic plan, there was a lot of excitement about where we could go next with it, with some expert assistance from some of our community members. And so I would agree with you, but I think it isn't starting from scratch to do it.
Oh, I agree.
It's to modify what we have, and that we could benefit significantly by having that outside assistance.
Yeah, I don't see it as starting from scratch. I see it as taking the foundation that we have here and using a process headed toward the budget in the spring of considering how we need to focus on these particular areas and address many of the broader issues that you all have brought up that I think we're right on. Other comments?
It's your job to put on the agenda.
Yes, and I had said that I would do that. I was hoping to do it by a week or so from now. We're not there yet, but with all of your help, I think we can have that community discussion that we desperately need to have.
And I would encourage any community members who are listening that have the experience with strategic planning to get in touch with Mr. Mayor and see if maybe we can engage some systems with this. Is that a real, or is that, or did we just irritate everybody?
I'm struck by the range of comments that we have here from, you know, dealing with additions and deletions of certain sections and words or paragraphs to sort of, the other end, I guess, was what I said about stuff that seems to be absent, that should be in there in the first place, and everything in between. So I guess I'm not really, maybe nobody knows, but I'm kind of curious as to, since I didn't participate in this original process, I don't have the benefit of that, how you think we're going to be able to proceed to bring this thing up, get this task done.
I think the particular recommendations for additions, deletions, changes that were made here tonight were all good ones. My sense is that staff has made note of those, and that we can get a revised version, a new memo that deals with a lot of that, and then pursue the recommendation that I made in tandem with that. It may be that the best way to proceed with some of the other particular recommendations is to revisit those after we've had a chance to look at them and kind of have a sense of which ones go in while recognizing that it's an ongoing discussion with the discussion that we need to have with the community.
Yeah, I think just kind of trying to figure out the easiest way for me to go forward, there were suggestions that staff made, there were suggestions that council members made. It may be useful to take the strategic planning document and kind of add those things in in some highlighted way, the comments that Councilmember Schultz has made, that then you could say, yeah, we're going to go forward with that, or gee, we still need to tweak it some. You know, I think that, I do, I strongly appreciate Councilmember Snipper's comments about kind of back and forth on resources, is needed to also hear of what the priorities are, and I appreciate that. And I think, you know, maybe we can, as staff, think through that a little bit more too. And, you know, so it may just be something that we kind of go through in taking the document with these additions and comments in a more integrated way, so that you can react to it based on what I've heard tonight. We may be able to throw some more things in there too, I don't know.
I mean, I heard Josh suggest, the Councilmember Wright, that we would, that in some way maybe this thing could be simplified. maybe this thing could be simplified, make it more digestible. Or was that Councilmember Clay?
That's why.
I don't know, I get you guys, two guys mixed up.
Councilmember Clay is the one who comes up with the good ideas.
That's right.
I'm the one that just steals them and looks good doing them.
That's right.
That's because you're always wearing a white shirt and a necktie.
Are you saying that if I didn't wear my tie-dye, you guys would pay more attention to me?
I don't think I would answer that question.
Don't wade into that one.
I'm saying Councilmember Schultz is in deep trouble, because he can get kicked.
Oh, no, 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 no violence. I love Councilmember Schultz.
Thank you very much. The feeling is mutual. So, we have those ideas, but I also heard from staff here that it seems like the priorities that are listed sort of need to be prioritized, such that not all priorities are equal. And I think that that would help staff, kind of, you know, maybe it's something that would help us, too, if we could do that.
Well, and I appreciate it also. Councilmember Clay did mention that some things, you know, are kind of timeline-based, and that makes a difference, too. So, we need to look at all of those factors.
I think there's a good basis here for a, kind of a comprehensive revised draft coming back, that we can all react to. And hopefully, the deputy city manager can work her magic and add things in, yet at the same time, simplify.
Whoa. I'd love to do that.
We have faith in your abilities.
Gee, thank you.
I actually do.
Just don't make them disappear, make sure you put that over there.
Other comments?
I'm not sure if I understand what the steps are now.
Staff is going to come back with a revised, new draft of the strategic plan, and-
Maybe a more workable document for you to do the next steps, but-
Yeah.
Can we schedule the next step now, though? I mean, can we get started on doing that?
Which next step are you referring to?
Starting a review process with the community, so that we can learn some about the service desires, and-
Yes.
And also the revisions to the strategic plan itself.
Yes, that is, I want to get that moving as soon as possible.
That's what I thought.
But I'm not willing to say a date certain tonight.
Okay, good.
And will we get that back from staff before we do that, or after, or can-
My sense is yes.
Okay.
That will be the kickoff document for the discussion.
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Snapper?
One other thought that may make the process a little easier, is to think of these things as, you know, near-term, medium-term, long-term, so that projects don't disappear, they just get moved to an out here.
They move on to what used to be termed, I don't remember what it was called, but it was at the end of the rolling agenda, it was like, future agenda items, or something like that.
The top shelf.
It just kind of became the gutter.
I know. But at some point, they sometimes do move from the back burner.
All of a sudden, they have a heightened importance.
Yes. Besides you to accomplish some things, we will, in fact, renovate Public Works.
One more chance for comments.
Public Works is going great.
We're good.